Okay, so welcome a little after seven to the Village of New Paltz Planning Board meeting. This is our first regular meeting of September on September 1st. Since none of us have named place, I will tell you who everybody is. Oh, that's okay. It's fine, we'll get it all worked out. This is Harsho, Rich Stephens, I'm Michael Zeiler. John Litten isn't here.
So we have on our agenda, we have several zoning for referrals. They're in front of us, all for Green Acres subdivision. And then we have a number of other business applications. We have two or old applications in front of us. Several additional things, discussions about application of 1408s, planning procedure discussions that I'm initiating tonight, and several other items that we'll get to. So why don't you guys come up and why don't you update us? And if we need time to actually go through the consent. So come on, just introduce yourselves for everybody.
Yes. I'm Dave Toder, Boulder Architecture, the architect for Green Acres. This is Anthony Abbey.
Thank you.
Developer of Green Acres. So there were some updates to the site plan in general identified by Dave Gilmore, the planner. So we added the drainage easement, which was not on my previous drawings, but that was some kind of oversight, as well as the corner clearances for not having tall shrubbery.
Site distance easements?
Similar. That's right, at the corners that are, there's one corner in this, the four lots that we're discussing. So those were updated. And then at our, at the last ZBA meeting, we had some questions about code interpretations. And so based on the information, the code interpretation by the building inspector, certainly a good way to go, we added in a few or modified some of the variance requests in light of the kind of correct interpretation.
Okay, so let me, and that's reflected in the letter you just handed to us?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's current, and that was updated.
All right.
Just following that ZBA meeting a few weeks ago.
But again, these are essentially all either setback or height variances?
That's, well, yes, though there's also one or two lots that are affected by a, an aspect of the village code that says that if it's a wide enough lot, meaning 90 foot of frontage or more, then driveways should not be in the side yard setback. We found, these are a little larger than not than that 90 foot frontage, but in our case, basically what it seemed to do is force you to have the garage doors facing the street. And we wanted to avoid that because in the neighborhood, we're the opinion that it's better if you don't see the garage doors. Maybe it's a modest improvement, but we kind of like that aesthetic a little more.
Where possible.
Where possible. We found that most people seem to like that as well. So we've requested where needed to comply with, where was, would fall afoul of that particular code, we did request it. In other cases, it did not apply.
Okay.
And then, yes, there were some, they're all, they all have the 25 foot front yard setback variance from 50 to 25 foot requested. Some of them, it's more critical than in others, but in all cases, it gives you a little bit of leeway to, you know, position the house best on the site because they are kind of small and not really close to the, to the back and away from the road. Let's see. Also, the interpretation of the corner lot by the building inspector was that if you have two front yards, then you have two rear yards and no side yards. We dispute that interpretation. I don't think that, actually, if you read the code, I think it's fairly clear that it says the second front yard kind of acts as both. It's a bit of a side yard, it's a bit of a front yard, depending on how you're looking at it. But in any case, you still have the other side yard. You don't lose that. But because the bill, we didn't have a, let's see, building inspector said it was two front and two rear, and we, unless your legal advisor, the ZBA's new legal advisor says differently, that's the way it is. And so we had to seek another, the side yard would have been 20 foot, the rear yard is 25 foot, so we needed a five foot variance on a rear yard.
Got it.
That we added.
Okay.
Yeah. That's most of it. And then the height variances that you noted. And so for three of them, these three here, those are slab on grade, and it's, it's a one foot height variance. It's actually going to be like six or eight inches when we have a little bit of leeway to make sure we don't encroach beyond what we're requesting. And then this one house has a basement, a walkout basement, and so in order to have the grade sloping gradually towards the walk outside on the west, we would need a six foot height variance, the way that grade is defined. We can still do the walkout basement and only ask for a one foot height variance, but it would mean that we'd need retaining walls right at the corner. We can define height, or grade, we can define grade as the corner, so if we have, you know, retaining walls, but we don't really, we think that look isn't as pleasant for the neighborhood.
Tunnel effect.
And I can show you elevations if that's not clear. That also was in the updated PDFs that we submitted.
Yeah, because one thing was we dove into a code, we found out that basically the shocking news is that the code doesn't allow two-story colonial houses, the traditional colonial.
Also?
Because they exceed the height variance. So I don't know if that was an oversight mistake.
We should explain that a little bit more clearly.
Yeah, I was going to say, how can a two-story exceed?
A typical house would be a certain height, a certain width, right? And with a gable roof, that would, you know, have some kind of height associated. You'd have eight foot of floor height plus the one foot of, you know, floor thickness. And you usually have your floor lifted a little bit above grade typically. So you have nine, 18, and then you have the roof pitch coming off. And it's usually, it would be more than 30 foot with a typical colonial.
Typical colonial is a 10 or 12 pitch roof. And we are down to an eight pitch to try and bring it down, but less than an eight pitch, the solar panels don't shed snow.
I have to take my house to a seven foot, a seven pitch in order to make it work.
Yeah.
So I've got a gable letter that.
And it's making a.
Nine would have looked right. Seven is what I have to do.
Yeah.
All right.
But for a colonial, it'd look better to have a little steeper pitch.
It would have been better. I just chose to not go for a variance, right?
So that's something.
I mean, Eric doesn't think that's something I'm bringing up today is something that probably should be addressed in the general code, not to prohibit it.
Well, we've talked about design standards, and that's certainly one of them. I, you know.
If you're looking.
I mean, I'm on a stream of nice older houses, but I just drew, all of a sudden, I got to drop mine in order to fit it.
Yeah.
So I can't look like the other houses on the block because that's the code.
Increase your risk of leaks and all these other things.
With the lower.
All right.
That's the code.
And there, there's another aspect that could be the way you would approach it, depending. New York State defines roof height as the average roof height. But New Paltz Village, as well as other, some other municipalities, defines it as roof peak. And that actually has a fairly significant effect, especially with different pitched roofs, which then it will.
Yes, and if you want to do a two-story Victorian, they could do.
One or the other that you would address if you were seeking to do something.
Because like the two-story Victorian could absolutely not be built because Victorians are like 12, 14.
Let me ask a question. All these houses are going to have to come for site plan review before you can get a building for it anyway. Why didn't we go that route first and see what we could work out prior to going to the ZBA?
We were told we had to go through it this way.
Did you go to the ZBA first?
Yes, I believe my understanding, and it's fairly new, so we're working out perhaps, but we have to complete, I think, the ZBA, including this visit to you, prior to going for site plan review at the planning board.
Because we have to see if the variance is accepted. Because we don't have a site plan to make. If we don't have to, right, because our, we have to get the variance, either A approved or denied, to do work and create a site plan. Because either just sketches or a site plan.
That's not always been the case.
No.
So if the ZBA approves something for you, but it won't go through our site plan review.
That's what we've been trying to avoid.
Right.
Well, that's why they consult you on all variances.
Well, yes.
Not in light of a full site plan. We're not looking at these as a site plan, we're looking at them as an isolated picture. Having to love your project, having to love the concepts of it, it's just you got to understand the position I'm sitting here in, and that we're looking at it as three variances as opposed to a site plan. If we were looking at it as the site plan, we could turn to the ZBA and say, look, we like this, to make this work, would you please support these three variances? Instead, we got to take a look at it and say, well, support these three variances, but we don't know if the site plan will work. We're in a really tough situation here.
Yeah, I'm not sure why you didn't go for a.
Because I would have to have him design the whole houses before we can come to the site plan. I'm not ready. If I can't do it, I don't want to have.
What about a B A?
No, you know, you know the heights already.
What would you have to do?
That's why you're going for the variance.
If we don't get the variances, I'm not going to have him go through the exercise of designing a house.
How do you know that the houses are too tall, then?
We, we know this just by, you know, just, we know how, why we want to make it, we know how long we want to make it, we know what the roof pitch we want, so.
The site plan review does not include all your architectural drawings. We don't, we don't require you to do all the engineering work, and we want, you know.
We were told for the site plan, we needed all engineering work.
What do you mean?
We don't want to see electrical plans, we don't want.
No, we don't want to see electrical, but we want to see the architectural.
No, we want to see engineered architectural drawings. I mean, that is, we want to.
We want to see elevations.
Elevations.
Yeah, but I don't want to go through the exercise of drawing all those elevations.
Right, two of these designs are to the end of schematic design, meaning that's pretty much what it's going to look like. And then three of them are actually fairly similar. There'll be modifications on the theme, but that's how we could know, you know.
We started those two before we actually knew we had to go for a site plan review.
So we haven't finished out, you know, those last two.
Well, the site plan review thing is new for us, too. I mean, there's only been one other property that's gone through it, so you'll be the second.
Is there a different standard? That this is part of a development that is, has an existing approval? It's still, well, I guess you'll tell us what we need to do and we'll do it.
Well, no, it's just, it's still a lock that has to go through site plan review in order to put an house on it.
Yeah.
But the idea would be that if we knew what it is you wanted to do, and we felt that this was good, we would then turn to the ZBA and say, hey, would you please support this, you know? I can't tell you that I'm hearing anything bad.
Which is what we're being asked to do in any of that, it's just we have less information for it.
It's kind of.
What other type?
What happens to these gentlemen if they go and get ZBA approvals for these variances? And it doesn't need site plan, that's my only point to it.
What other information would you need beyond what we've already?
What if we decided we don't want to see the driveway there, or there's another way to do it, or the topography is, you know.
I'm not sure that would alter the variance, though, since.
I'm not looking for a problem.
No, no, I know you're not.
I'm just trying to, is that the situation?
No, I know, I think you're trying to ideally make.
Is the cart in front of the horse, or is it pushing the cart? I don't know.
So.
Well, let's put it this way, from everybody's involvement in this village so far, nobody has answered that.
I couldn't believe that.
Well, so maybe we don't need to hold these guys up to have that conversation. I mean, because we, this is.
No, what are we going to tell the planning board? Oh, the ZBA?
The planning board?
Yeah.
A year.
We are the.
Yeah, we're the.
Just go look in her and have a conversation.
I think that, I mean, I'm comfortable continuing this and coming to a decision based on what we know, and based on the fact that this isn't the first lots in the subdivision that they booked on.
Yeah, but isn't this the first time that they're coming with a height variance request? All the others were just.
It's not the first. We did one other height variance.
All the others were, were just setback variances.
There's never a precedence when it comes to.
David Schaeffler's house was a height variance as well. So we got a ZBA variance for, that was one of the first three.
ZBA does not set precedents.
Two thousand nine, ten, eight.
That's not, that's not the definition. ZBA, every issue is its own issue, every lot stands on its own. So just because they agreed to it for somebody, doesn't even have to be to it for somebody else.
They've clarified that every time, that don't expect.
So, yeah. But, I mean, do I look up their driving and awe how much I like that subdivision? Am I very much in favor of the solar houses?
But after, okay, so in theory, once they get the variances, they still have to come back to us for site plan review.
Right.
Are, are you aware of that?
That, that is our understanding at this time. Yeah. Can you tell me what else you'd like to see when and if we get to that next stage beyond the information already contained?
There's a pretty good checklist of what.
Yeah, I would say.
It's like.
That you can follow the checklist. I mean, at this point, I don't think there's anything unusual.
Has there been a checklist made recently?
No.
Well, there is a checklist, though I was under the impression that some of those items might not be relevant to our project based on its exact, you know, its specifics.
You can ask that someone wavered.
Absolutely. Right, well, effectively, I went through and I, I added everything that I thought was appropriate in terms of communicating clearly the issues, you know, contingent on this project. So theoretically, I have a complete site plan for your purposes as well as the ZBA. That's the goal I had, anyway.
Well, I mean, we put together with our attorney, we put together a suggestion for modifying the checklist so that.
Yeah.
Simple.
Did we ever?
We had lots of questions.
I assume, well, I assume that it's.
We have more questions to answer.
It's later in the agenda tonight.
Okay, so we'll get back to that, so it's in process. I, at this point, it seems to me it's sort of, this is where we are. I think this information will be useful when we come back for site plan, but had we done it the other way, that might have been, I'm not sure that the outcome would be necessarily any different. So without having looked at this in detail since then, specifically, just to explain briefly, the reasons that you need these setbacks is because of the typical front setback in this area is 50 foot.
Yes.
And these lots are not that large, and so.
Right, when it was originally subdivided, this was R2 zoning.
Right.
It only had a 25 foot. I did the calculation, basically the change from R1, from R2 to R1 zoning removed like 20% of the buildable area that they were approved with, meaning that many of the lots, like this one, for example, you can't build on that a normal house without getting a variance, and that's the story for many of the houses in the.
And it's one of the largest lots.
That's our, that's our ZBA difficulty. It's not self-created.
Because the original planning board, the site plan review that went through for the subdivision, because they actually just had some site plan review done back then. So, and the site plan review, it's worked out that this is, you know, based on these 25 foot yard, right, this is how it works, it's open, so just went through extensive site plan review back then. But then somewhere after that was done, somebody went and drew a matchwork with Sharpie.
And said this is a headline.
And it sounds like the R1 district with the 50 foot setbacks may also have been a change from.
It was basically done because there was a concern, when I did that subdivision originally, we had accessory apartments, and there was one house that went and became a two-family. And under R2, that was legal. And so where the intention was to develop that neighborhood with accessory apartments to provide affordable housing, all of a sudden, it was going to look like two-family houses were coming down the pike. And in a rush to stop that, the subsequent planning board and village board changed zoning from R2 to R1.
But if you dwelt through a code.
And in course, doing so.
And also didn't stop the, it didn't really actually restrict the multiple family houses.
You could still do multi-family if you could fit it, if you could get approval.
If you could fit it.
Yeah, if you wanted to put lots together, then you'd still go through site plan review and, you know, it wouldn't miss a trick.
And that was.
Two thousand one was the.
I just tried to give you a little bit of history on when that was. So, you know, but when these gentlemen bought the subdivision, it was R1.
Right. And the subdivision was modified slightly.
Right, but though he didn't actually know because the maps weren't updated.
Yeah, the maps were updated after I bought the property.
Was it really?
Buildable lots.
Yep, the building department said it was R2, everybody said it was R2, and then like the day after I closed, there was a Sharpie mark going around the.
All right, well, it seems to me that's certainly not a.
You've got the building department that had been out.
So on that basis, that seems like a hardship that you all got into without knowing about.
Yeah.
So I can't, can't really argue against that.
Yeah, back in the days of Kathy, she remembers, she came to her office one day, somebody drew a Sharpie around the.
Okay.
Well, you just got to show the planning board that you've got a hardship here.
Well, I think that's it.
What's the hardship?
They bought this.
They're non-buildable, or?
That they bought this assuming that it was one type of zoning with 25 foot setbacks with these existing, and then found out after they purchased it, it was R2. R1 now, and they're longer capable of building on that. I mean, they, you know, presumably it was purchased with an idea that so many lots, you can pay so much for the property, and otherwise they have to be combined lots in order to build. So, any other, do you have any other questions or comments?
Are, are all these one, two, three, four houses that you're planning on building, this is probably ahead of the question that could be asked later on, but I'll ask it now, that you're planning on these being single-family houses?
Just like we've been doing so far.
Just like everything else up there.
Yeah.
Have you been up there?
Not recently.
It's looking good.
So, and you explained to me you have six additional lots after these four.
That's right, there are 15 houses up, mostly occupied and sold, and then these four, and then six more, four of them are right here, two are at the top of it.
And you'll have these, presumably that's.
We'll see you again several times.
And the 15 that you've already built, do they need variances?
Some of them did. At least more than half.
Not all of them, not all of them. No, the two at the top of the hill, we didn't get any variances for, 12 and 13.
Yeah, two.
Yeah, so most have gotten variances of one type or another, but not all of them.
And some probably should have got variances, but didn't because the building department didn't real, their interpretation of the code at the time, they didn't, you know, dwell through all the contradictions and find out which was the one several.
Okay.
But we figured it out after the fact, but it's after CO until we bought the house.
Okay.
If one of the hardships is, the problems is with the zoning issue.
Right.
Can the ZBA mediate this, or would you be willing to even mediate with the ZBA that restricted the rest of your lots to only being single-family homes?
Well, yeah, we've been operating under that, the whole idea from day one. We didn't know.
Well, I just, you mentioned unless, unless we combine lots differently.
Yeah, and, and.
You brought it up.
Sure, sure, we'd be happy to accommodate.
There'll never be a two.
See what we want to do and what we're planning to keep doing, it's, you know, judge it by that.
I'm not sure I see the connection.
Well, because the idea, you know, that the ZBA could mediate this problem that we have with the zoning by asking them to accept the restrictions, saying that there will be no two-family houses built on any of the remaining lots.
I think they already tried doing that, but they were told they couldn't do that. And I think Bren before you was trying to just change the setbacks in the R1 within the village. And that was a process that I think you're working on still, right?
I don't know what held up the prior process, why that wasn't carried through. I haven't come up with anything conclusive as in the legislative research that I've done. So then we do have proposals for changes in area dimensions now as part of the Brenda White Consulting Project, and I've identified, for example, in my analysis, that we have a prevalence of variances in this area. So it would seem indicative of a potential for a zoning upgrade, consistent with the work that you have.
We made the same mistake with the, it was annexed, this was annexed in the village. That was annexed with the Niffen thing. We threw R1 zoning on there to make it as restrictive, we thought was restrictive.
Right.
But that's not necessarily what we want there.
Right, I know.
I, I think these gentlemen got stuck with that same problem.
So, okay.
The best way to solve it? I don't know the best way to solve it, sitting here, but I know I like the project, I like what they're talking about doing here.
So can we set aside this, so, okay, so are we close to making a decision about what we want to consent to the ZBA? I mean, take, it's fine, take as much time as we need.
Yeah, I, I have a hard time recommending it to the ZBA.
Okay.
But I certainly don't, I have an even harder time denying it. So therein lies my qualm, that's what, that's my thought process here.
Okay.
I'd almost like to take the cowardly way out and do nothing, but that's the cowardly way out.
Well, you're, you're in doubt to abstain if that's your.
No, no, no.
I don't have a, the only thing I'm uncomfortable with is driveway in the side yard, because I foresee that the neighbor next door, who might not have a driveway in the side yard, that, that that would create problems. This is the flag lot one?
No, no, the flag lot doesn't come under the problem.
All, all of them are asking.
It's like to the front yard.
13, nine, and five are asking.
I might have, maybe I have.
We might have changed this one design. I think the recommendation of the ZBA was to try and move it in further forward.
That's right, I apologize. This is slightly out of date. We adjusted this one. The correct list of requested variances is there, and I think we are not requesting a side yard, and it's only, it's only this one that was so tight.
It looks like five, nine, and 13 is what you're.
This one has a side yard, it's only rear yards.
Excuse me.
It's only five Cooper, I think that's requesting that.
Five and nine is what you're.
It is five.
Nine because of this, because of the 25 and the 20, the side yard issue.
But doesn't have a side yard.
The one where it does, it has not had a side yard.
If it has a side yard, so we actually change it then, or it's, it's both, it's either, whichever we need to do to make it work. But it might be only this one, if this is two rear and two front, then we don't need a side yard, you know, driveway variance.
Yeah, the question is, we just, we added this one in because we are waiting, probably somebody to make a decision if that's a side yard or a rear yard.
All the ones that I've ever dealt with in another jurisdiction in another state was corner lots were two fronts and two rears with no side. So to me, that's a common thing.
I mean, so, but on the ground, if you look at this, so this driveway is closest to the flag lot driveway, and then that's fairly far from this house, which is pushed up this way. So I don't necessarily.
So where do you have the driveway for that?
See, here's, here's the driveway here.
Comes in this way.
Yeah, it comes, that's the existing curb cut.
So that is, that's, oh, okay, so that's where you're asking to have it?
Right.
Is where you, where you're showing it right now?
That's correct.
So, yeah, so this would be a good site plan issue, because we might discuss whether that, you know, in this driveway or not, but.
Yeah, it might even be better to have it closer to this driveway.
Closer, right. But anyway, that's not what we're doing today. And I guess the only question with that one is, the older houses in the next lot, where is that in relation to the, fairly close to the road?
No, it's right about here.
Okay.
Those are similar sized lots, so that's a corner lot here.
And the house is.
At Bontecue, it's basically the middle. Most of those are roughly in the center.
Your, your concern is impact of having a driveway near a neighbor's.
Near, near a neighbor's house, right. And in this case, because of the flag lot, you have another driveway, I don't see a problem being in, in the setback. My concern was if you had, you know, the driveway too close to a house like this.
So I guess part of what we can do is, this is the site plan versus variance issue again. So if we, if we make, if regardless of what we do, if the ZBA makes a recommendation. And they approve all of these variances, and then you all come for site plan. We still have the ability to change things that may have been approved by the variance. Like if, if they say the driveway can go here, doesn't mean it has to go there, right? If everybody agrees that it might be a better place for it.
I wouldn't think that's the case, I would think that once they've got the variance, the variance travels with the land, it'll travel with the person.
No, I understand that, but, but...
Or, or the plan in front of us, built with property.
But we, all the variance does is it allows them to do something that they couldn't otherwise do. It doesn't mean they have to do it though, is what I'm, that's the question I'm asking. So if it turns out that, for instance...
No, but can, no, the question isn't that, the question is, can we require them to do something different than what they've got approval to do?
Uh, probably not, but we could have a conversation about whether or not, that might be an alternative.
And actually, um, there's a distinction.
Yeah, I, I, that's why lawyers make money, you know?
Okay.
I updated one to remove that, because variance board decided to make us request to move this further forward.
Yeah, I shifted it, that's right, I shifted it to south.
You shifted it south and a little bit more east.
So which would increase your...
So it would not be in...
So it wouldn't be in that side yard right there.
Okay.
Which lot is that?
So what we're, seventeen, so what we're looking at is outdated.
Yeah.
But your front yard setback then is even, variance even greater?
No, it's just going to be twenty-five, we're just going to move closer.
Right, it was in the twenty-five.
They stay within twenty-five, just not the fifty, I see, okay.
That's right.
So this isn't the map, the ZBA's?
Because these people in this house would prefer the house be moved further forward, so they have a better...
This isn't the map to ZBA's.
Well, no, actually, this is the map that I looked at with the ZBA, and I updated a PDF, which I sent them, but I... I decided to print a new one for our use today.
Yeah, they gave some recommendations.
Which we followed.
Okay. So, do you guys need a little more time to digest this, or should we make a motion to do something?
Well, I'm... I would feel a lot more comfortable if I was looking at a site plan that was what you were talking about.
Right, if that wasn't out of date, so.
Right.
Do we have something with topography on it at all, do you have any with you?
We never got any topogra, I didn't ever receive topography from the...
He was supposed to hold flat right here.
I had one time built a three-dimensional model of this subdivision, so...
That's uphill from those.
Yeah, this is the hill, this, this is a little, a little rise here, but you don't pretty much...
Yeah, but we probably...
Because it might affect how we will think about the drivers.
Right. The drainage and...
Does that start getting into, you know, an improved subdivision and a kind of cost for the applicant that's potentially not reasonable to be necessary? You know, to get topo, he'd have to pay the surveyor to put topo on.
Well, but part of a site plan requirement is topo.
As appropriate, but if it's an existing subdivision, potentially that's something you can do without.
The original subdivision maps have all topo on it.
I, I'm really bad, I think I did two conversations at the same time. Could one person answer instead of both? So this is the subdivision map.
What is it, we only have one other application go through site?
The topo is probably that one required, no sheet. If one of your lawyers did it out.
Um...
No?
Well, you assure me of that, but I've never received it from you. Because you're not working with the actual surveyor, right?
Oh, so this was the previous, the people you bought it from, which would make sense.
Maybe we can get to topo, because it's somewhere, maybe we can.
Um, so let's get oriented here, distributaries, thirteen...
We're right here.
So these four.
Cooper is good for orienting, Taylor, excuse me.
So here we're looking at... These four.
Yep, that's right, and this is the neighboring property that you were concerned about the driveway with the side yard setback, so that's, that's those two lots.
And, so these are...
And that's the drainage, you mean.
Alright, so these are houses that they proposed within setback.
Within the fifty-foot setback. That's, that would be within the fifty-foot.
Look at that, they're tiny.
They presumably are within all the setbacks.
Yeah, one inch, that's one inch, yeah.
And they're using these as fronts, that too, here.
Well, I think we've all agreed to twenty-five-foot setback.
Though it's got a rear and a side.
Well, they're saying that this is, the lot numbers don't, no, they don't close by.
No, yeah, lot numbers are...
Street addresses are different than the subdivision lot numbers.
Okay. So, yes, this is showing a rather small envelope. Because it's fifty and fifty, yeah, they showed it as two fronts and two rears here.
Right.
Well, is this based on R one, on R one zoning?
Yeah, this was updated to R one, because this was done in two thousand and three.
So this, this...
I got this map from the county and finally...
According to this map, you can put houses in that lot?
Well, they fix little tiny houses, yeah, they're all little bungos basically.
So presumably...
This is basically like a twenty-five-foot house by, like, twenty?
No, that's, that's like a forty.
Because that's fifty foot right there, this is probably about thirty. We'll just scale it once you have a scale or in your head.
Want me to get a scale for you?
Sure.
I've got a travel size.
So this house is...
But the major problem is regarding the building laws, we have to orient that house to south.
You have to orientate them for the solar, yeah, I didn't realize that.
So, I mean, these are just built like, you know...
But it's the only other problem, that is, if you've got to build a lot, we've got to come up with a reason.
It's for the solar, it's basically what have always been, that's all it's been saying, about the solar orientation.
So these are what, one, thirty-seven by twenty-five?
You can see what scale it is, I guess.
It's, uh...
One inch is fifty feet.
Fifty. Oh, this is an architectural scale. That's just a little, oh. Okay. So, um, it's seven-eighths of fifty feet.
Forty-four?
Yeah, so, and it's a little bit smaller than that yet, so maybe forty by thirty? At the big, at the long.
Right.
Um, and because you want to orient everything south.
Yeah.
Is why you need your variances. I mean, in addition, you have garages, which they don't have. I mean, if you didn't have garages to a great extent.
Oh, yeah, if you have garages, yeah.
Fifty's in the apple.
People want garages. And if we don't put them on, they're going to be coming back to you guys, just put garages on all, anyway. Even places where you put small garages.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming that since this is south, that the peak will be going this way?
Yeah.
Well, I don't want to assume, I would prefer that there's something that indicates.
David, would inability to build a solar house create a hardship?
There are, I think, laws that enable access to solar or promote access to solar. And there's, I think, federal bases for access to solar.
Well, we're not, we're not saying they can't have solar, we're saying that they might have to put, if, if they can't orient the house to the south. Then they might have to adjust accordingly with the appropriate superstructure on the roof.
Understood. That's not the way they build here.
Right.
Part of the idea for both the ZBA and the planning board is neighborhood character. And what the people who live there, as well as the wider neighborhood and community, what they want, how they see these things. And quite frankly, everyone I've talked to is thrilled. So, I mean, we're doing something right, and one of the things we're doing is, we're rotating the buildings to south. It puts the corners out. In fact, some of these, there's also another piece, as we were delving into the code. Some of these, you're allowed to put the corner of a building into a side yard without needing a variance. As long as it's less than half and less than half of the, so you can't put the, the side of it.
Who said that?
Why, it's in the code. He could find it, because he has the code there as well. There's something about the corner of a building going into...
That was something you spoke about with the building inspector?
That's something I found in your code, yeah, it's in there. And I have a citation in my, my last piece there.
The ability for the ZBA to approve?
I can give you the designation, I can just...
So I've got to find a...
I'll give it back.
Hardship to hang the hat on.
Well, they, they said that they were shifting it over and forward.
Right.
So that, yeah, I don't know why they...
Because these people don't want the house blocking your view. And so I'm trying to accommodate the neighbors.
This is one of the completed ones.
Sorry, I was looking at the code, I missed which property that was.
Seventeen.
We were talking about seventeen and the neighbor who's up the hill a little bit, whose view?
Star and Paul.
The neighbor's to the east and up the hill, I guess.
And even if he's uphill, that would still infringe on his view?
It's a request of theirs, trying to accommodate.
Not egregiously, but we're trying as much as possible to offset everything and stagger the houses to maximum.
Make them look nice, not just, I don't like developments where things just plop there.
Right, I mean, that's, this isn't like the best planning, where they're cooked, they're just all, anyway.
I don't disagree with that.
Yeah.
Well, I'm...
As a model.
Trying to make things fit into lay of the land. And we don't really nearly come up with the whole way of like how we want it to sit. We sit there and stand there hours at a time. Arguing and fighting basically about which way we want it to look and how it's going to look the best.
So this lot, you're within fifty-foot?
That's right, that one just, that one fits just barely, and so some of it is to have a little bit of leeway. Because, you know, two inches on a foundation is really tight.
Yeah, side length for the drive.
And, and it might be that that would shift forward a little bit if we were, if we had the freedom to, you know, to fit the, the site best. And be farthest away from all the neighbors and, you know, make a backyard, all those considerations.
Yeah, and then this one fits in also, but, you know...
Yeah, I can see how we...
Well, yeah, because you're then approaching on this yard. Although that's, yeah, I guess so.
Yeah, he called that a side yard, I guess. Flag lot.
The flag lot.
Yeah, he said, so the front yard is within the pole of the flag.
Right.
It's, it's absorbed in it, so opposite is the rear, and then everything else is side.
So this is the rear and everything else is side?
That's what he said, I believe that's what's drawn, that's what he said.
The front is the piece that touches the public right of thing.
Right.
The side, opposite that is the rear yard.
Okay.
Everything else is a side yard.
Yeah.
There could be ten side yards to a shape. But there's a front and a back, everything else is a side.
Yeah, in this case, that's, it's a four-side. All right, this is number which?
Thirteen.
All right, so...
There it is.
So you would need a variance for the drive line for this, just for the flag lot?
Yeah.
Because it goes through a side yard, as defined.
Yes.
But, ah, we don't, because it doesn't have more than ninety-foot of road front.
That's right.
Thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome, we're wrestling rings ourselves.
Yeah, you come up with, yeah, then you find an intersection down the road somewhere, from this. I think somebody needs to make that code look like, you know, just ten pages.
All right.
Well, you know. I mean, the difference between, you know, our board and the ZBA board is that we're really restricted to the code. The ZBA has the ability to fix those problems with the code, to make a better subdivision. Or to make a better plan, or to make things work in a more timely fashion. We're restricted to the law.
So when you comment to them at this stage in the process, you kind of comment on the appropriateness of what they would be doing?
Yeah, if we saw something that we felt we can't change it, or we think they should, we would send a very strong recommendation. They don't always take our recommendation too much. But what have we seen? We've seen only what you want for variances, we haven't seen what the whole picture is. Luckily, I'm very familiar, I, I love a subdivision, I write through all the time, get my ideas, things are beautiful. And I like the concept of using the solar, I love the concept of, of what's going on there. But my hands are restricted to what does that book say? Now, what can I turn to the ZBA and tell them tonight? I would like to be able to give them something that they can hang an approval on. And if it's the solar, that could be the hardship that they can hang this on. I also want to keep in mind that we will be seeing these for site plan review. Whatever they approve, whatever we recommend now, we may be living with later.
I'm not quite sure why you think that solar is a hardship. Maybe I'm not, I don't understand it.
I'm not saying it is, only that's the only hardship I could come up with for having to reorient the houses. These are buildable lots.
To reorient, because we need to reorient that.
If it wasn't for the solar, these would be buildable lots.
Got it.
The ZBA can't just approve a lot that's buildable. If there isn't a reason to not. They need some sort of a hardship to say, okay, this is a buildable lot, but these gentlemen should be able to go beyond that code. So when, you know, the solar will do that, I, that's what we're discussing here.
Well, their main platform always is also how does it improve neighborhoods.
I think that's a tough one.
That's one of their, that's one of their big things that they always start off.
I, I, you know, I know they do, but that, you know, we don't have design standards on either of the two boards.
Right.
There's no design standards out there for good taste. I was doing a subdivision once in another municipality.
Outdoor lighting standards and architectural standards.
I did a subdivision in another municipality one time, and they wanted my client to agree to no houses being of anything other than earth toned colors. So when I brought up the idea of purple, they said, that's exactly what we don't want. The most prolific flower on that whole property was purple loose strife. So, I mean, you know, we don't have design standards here to go by and say, these, these are beautiful. They are, but we have to go based on how many feet from the sideline, how tall it is.
Right.
Because a lot better, thirty-six feet than thirty. No doubt about it, but guess what? If it's over thirty, our hands are tied. The ZBA could change it, but we can't. But the ZBA needs to find a reason to do that, that's a hardship. They need to find a reason that's other than, we like it. It has to be, it's good for the community, it's good for the...
Poor laws, is that a hardship?
I would say a poor law is a good one, yeah.
I would.
Yeah, it's a bad law, let's fix it by... But, but changing the law by ZBA is...
The longer driveways was another one that the ZBA...
Changing the law by the village board has found, had traction.
All right, so, but in the meantime, okay, that may be true, or just modifying the setbacks and so forth. But I actually take the exception, I think the planning board has as a responsibility to try to adjudicate good planning. Although the code may not help us in that regard. As much as possible, I would like to not let it hurt us in that regard. So, to the extent that this is an, this is a subdivision that is in process, they've been building houses there for years. That, I would, I would say that it would be part of the reason, and I don't know if you can call this a hardship. But, but to put them in a position where they can no longer build houses that are consistent with the standards. And the general look of the neighborhood would be, would be the wrong thing to do.
I agree with you one hundred percent.
And I would argue that that's a legitimate reason for recommending this. Precisely because it does provide access to solar, optimize access to solar, and retains the look of the neighborhood.
I could go along with that, Michael, I'm just wondering whether the ZBA's attorney and the ZBA will go along with that.
Well, that's up to them, I mean, we can't, I don't want to second guess that, but...
David, Toder. This, oh, yeah, I would have assumed that, that was his name also, but, Dave, let's go with the easier one.
Dave there, I like that.
The hash marks here.
Yes. What are you differentiating there?
It's a breezeway.
Okay.
Because for lead rating, the garage can't be, well, directly connected to.
Well, it could, but I choose to.
Have a solid wall. It could have a different way of connecting it, but you can't have a door that goes directly into it.
Requirement that's from me. My houses are so tight and efficient, I do not want any connection to the pollutants from the garage.
Well, lead doesn't want that either.
Okay.
You have to, you have to have a fan going in your garage to do a door direct from one another.
Breezeways.
That's right. So roofed over, like the, the front porch is also of the same lighter hatch designation.
Got it.
So they're open roofed area.
Non livable space.
That's right. Not enclosed.
Or, and non enclosed, because it's the largest considered livable space.
The breeze can blow through.
Well, I, you know, if we can, again, I, I don't want to go and say, yes, this is great because we're saying, yes, this is great to something that you're saying is, has been changed.
Yeah, we made.
I'm a part of that variance.
We thought you guys would have the whole email package. The email didn't get fixed?
I honestly, I'm just described for the meeting, so I don't know what transpired.
Yeah, Kay's not the word in a bit of transition. We don't have a, we don't, we had. Sorry to the planning board at the moment, so. So I'm going to ask, if it's possible, we've spent almost fifty minutes on this. If we can, we need to make a decision, the three of us, about what to do, so. One more roundup, if you have any more comments or questions, but then I'd love to. No, I don't have any.
Moving on.
Okay, it's your question. So. I like the break.
Is this a York property?
No, this is all just. I asked, I asked.
Dave Gilmore.
I asked Dave Gilmore to bring us this from the street file, so we have. Is there a way that you can get?
Do you have a? I don't personally. I haven't seen that before. It's kind of neat to see.
You should have that from Barry. Is that Barry work?
Before you put that away.
That's not Barry work.
That's my.
That's not getting bucked, no.
Yeah.
The lane group, so this is, this is circa.
Okay, so while they were developing.
First building of the town.
Right, it was revised in O two after the O one decision.
Right. So, do either of you want to make a motion about what to recommend to the, to make recommendations and so forth or not? And if you want to make a recommendation, indicate what to do. I, I would say I have no strong feeling either way.
I'm struggling with it.
Is that the wimp out there that you were talking about? That's a good one.
Have you got acceptable words that I could agree to?
Well, I'm happy to make a motion that we recommend approving these variances as they were presented to us tonight. Reasons being what I stated previously. One, I think that it, without them, no, let me say it positively. The first reason is that I think it provides consistency with the neighborhood character of this subdivision as it's being built out. And secondly, it enables them to optimize access to solar energy, which is an integral part of the design of these individual houses and of this neighborhood total. That's my motion.
I can second that.
Comments or questions?
Then I'll go along with that.
Okay. All in favor? Aye?
Okay, so is there any other guidelines that you have in reporting to the zoning board on this matter or just use your resolution?
Well, I'm going by what they told us, not necessarily what's indicated on this plaque.
What they gave us is different from what we've seen.
What we were told. So I'm leaning towards what they told us is what we're agreeing to, not necessarily. Which is why I said, based on what we were told, I guess, by the applicant, so.
And then we notes in minutes for, for her to refer back to for your.
For your. Yes, ma'am.
Would it be wise to stipulate that in what you're, define what it is Liz is referring to? So when we get it and we're looking at your, ZBA gets it and we're looking at your.
So specifically no need for a driveway and a side yard on Seventeen Cooper. That was the one distinction.
Well, you, you said that you had shifted that over according to what they originally said.
That's right.
At the next round, if the platte now shows that.
It does.
Okay, so let's.
So that got lost in ether space?
Yeah. All right, although we've approved this, let's, at Ellen's recommendation, let's add to our note. If you don't mind, the motion would be as approved with the addition that for Seventeen Cooper, changes based on conversations between the applicant and the ZBA previously. There's no longer, that the building may be shifted, coming to our station again.
South.
Shifted south and east. South and a little east.
Closer to that twenty-five.
Closer to the twenty-five foot and that there's no longer need for a driveway variance. South and west.
No, south and east.
It was too south. I had to go.
This way.
They jumped up, just south directly.
Just do south.
Yeah, we hoped to push it east, but we couldn't stay on the side yard, so.
So based on. To avoid needing the variance for driveway. All right, so the addition to the motion is then that we understand the applicant and the ZBA previously made it, based on their conversations, that Seventeen Cooper, the building will be brought forward in a southerly direction, eliminating the need for a driveway variance.
And based on our concern.
And then it's our factor. Hold on, hold on.
Want to add one more?
Let me just finish this. You want to add something else to that?
Yeah, finish that then.
Well, that's the motion. I just want to.
I'll accept the.
Okay, so that's the amendment to the motion. All right? Yes. Everybody agreed?
Agreed.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. What do you want to say yet?
Um, I don't, no, he had a concern that, that you're done. I mean, we could be, we would probably turn this garage in a cat corner angle and just come in front.
Well, you're going to see us again on site plan review, so.
If you want to, if you want to modify that and makes things less of a.
Better?
Then we would kick a corner of the build, but this is the, what you would get. A corner of the building would go into the side yard instead of the driveway. Theoretically, a driveway is less of an impact in a side yard. We can put the building corner in, but we were trying to do less of an impact by only putting the driveway in. If we rotated to what he's doing, it'll have a different impact, maybe a greater one.
Well, and aesthetically, you might not want.
We've done some nice work with the rotated garages, so, you know, we can make it work, but that was why we didn't, and we asked for this.
That's a decision you guys can make, discuss it with the planning board and then.
No.
I mean, the ZBA, thank you very much.
And you as well.
I'm going to have to move on.
And that was which lot with the rotation?
Seven.
No, no, the, the possible rotation was five.
It's five Cooper.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to say that we're done with you for today.
Okay, we are done.
Thanks very much.
Yes, thank you.
All right.
Thank you for talking.
Yeah, you take that.
Take that away.
I'm presumably going to be getting one, so no, thanks. It's fine. Probably not.
Do you want them at this stage or will it be acceptable to get them at site plan review? I don't know that they're.
Well, let's wait for a site plan. Thanks.
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
A suggestion. If you believe consequent upon this discussion that there is confusion in the code about the sequencing of an application, whether it should go to the ZBA and then the planning board, or the planning board and then the ZBA and back to the plan. If you discover as a result of this investigation and conversation that there's confusion in the code, I believe the board would entertain a correction of the code so that you wouldn't go through this again. You would be clearer and would be made clearer based upon your experience.
I wish it were so simple, but we'll have that conversation in no time.
I'm just saying.
No, I appreciate it very much.
Well, Tom, it's my understanding there's only two pathways to the ZBA. One is through the planning board and the other is directly from the building inspector. So those are only two pathways.
Whatever the sequencing is, if we can get it right, if we make it right easily.
Okay, we'll have, let's save that conversation for another meeting, but thank you. I appreciate your willingness to help. Okay, that takes care of items one through four. Thank you, guys.
Yep.
We're on to other business. Okay, item five is a proposal for the planning board to send a letter to the applicant of PB fourteen oh eight. The issue is, this is a pencil hill site plan. We haven't seen any activity there for over six months and the letter is to inform the applicant that they have thirty days, after which we will consider or could consider abandoning this application. Meaning that in the future, if they decide they want to do something after that. They have to start from square one. Start from square one, all the fees, the new, file a new application and so forth. We received a letter from our planner to this effect. And I do believe everybody received that. And the letter is fairly simple. So if you've all had a chance to review it, let me know if you have any questions. I'm happy to read it, but.
I got it.
Okay. I have some minor editorial changes to it since it's going out under my name. Editor, so that's okay. But other than that, it's fine.
Does that take a motion of the board moving?
Um, I think it should. Why not?
How somewhat did you be authorized to send that letter with the necessary edits?
So moved, so seconded, excuse me. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you very much. I'll send you and Katie, I'll send you guys my editorial changes to that.
Absolutely.
Tonight or tomorrow morning. Okay. Both. So item number six. So this was at my request. I simply a general conversation about planning board procedures and what I, what I'd like to do is not have a long conversation tonight, but, and I'd much prefer to do this when John is back as well. Basically, what I'd like to do is take this transition as an opportunity to ask all of you to think about what procedurally, whereas what we do at meetings and what we do in terms of interfacing with our planner and the building department and our secretary and our liaison. What are things that we're doing that you think are good, we should continue? And any ideas that you have about ways that we might want to change things up a little bit? That's, that's the gist of it. I think it's, you know, good once in a while to take stock of how you do things. So that's the point. We don't need to have a conversation about that tonight. But I will add to this as an item. We've had some requests from community, members of the community to have the planning board consider having a public comment session as part of everything. And my understanding is that they went to, some people went to the village board to bring this up. You may recall that this actually came up, was a conversation by a couple of town planning board members when we had a joint meeting with the other back, I think mayor or so, and. Yeah, it's my understanding that the town has public com.
Yes.
The town has. On a regular basis.
Fifteen minutes, three minutes per person.
Exactly. They do that routinely. They ask that you stick to planning board items and do not discuss items for which they have a public hearing that evening. But otherwise, the, there's no other constraints. And I am fine with trying this out, using the same format, fifteen minutes, three minutes per speaker at the maximum. And again, limited to items that are not in front of the planning board that evening for public hearing.
Michael, would they be limited to items that involve the village?
What do you mean?
Could somebody come in and talk about CVS?
That really would be out of our purview, so I would say no.
That would shut down their three minutes.
I don't, I, well, there's nothing, I don't know why they would come to us to say anything because we can't do dilly about it. I mean, if.
You're, how long are you looking at Paul's?
Okay. No, I mean, as a planning board.
I know Liz, but, you know, I think that, you know, I think the soapbox is a great concept. I just want to be able to limit the time because it's fifteen minutes.
Say no to that sort of thing because I don't, I don't really want to put a lid on it. I don't want to make any more rules than necessary at this point. I feel like.
So it doesn't have to be village issues. It could be any issue they want for their three minutes.
I, I would, I would, at first, I'd be limited to this.
I think it's a great opportunity for us to get suggestions. I think it's a great opportunity for people to come in with things they see around the village that might need improving or, I just don't want it to be talking about issues outside, anywhere near our realm.
Say that it's, right, I would rather limit it to village. What if somebody comes in and wants the three minutes of talking about their presidential candidate? You know, no, I, I think it should just be limited to village. And if we want to expand it, we could always do that later on, but.
I would think it should be village.
That's fine. I'm willing to say that we, that the issue should be relevant to the village planning.
Yes.
Great.
You know, it's an experiment. We'll see how it goes. If we feel that people are abusing it in a way that doesn't benefit our ability to help in our role as planning board members and as a planning board, then we'll have to revisit it.
Again, do you want to wait for John or should we look for a motion to enact that tonight?
Well, I was able to speak to John tonight on the phone and he sent me an email, so let me pull that up.
You got to be careful with his emails. He's got an auto corrector. Makes him very silly mistakes.
This one I think is, this one is fine. I did read it already.
Okay.
He said, it was good to speak to you in regards to the conversation we had. My thoughts are below. I have no issue with public comment at our planning board meetings. My issue is with the amount of time dedicated to public comments. I would like to see a limit on the total time for comments and the amount of time each person has. Perhaps we can dedicate fifteen minutes total and a limit each commenter to three minutes. Please let me know your thoughts and any discussion the board has, so.
Michael, would you send that to the planning board secretary?
I will, as soon as we're off camera on you then. So he seems to be in general agreement. So I'd like to.
Would you like a motion?
Yeah, let's make a motion.
I'm over that, starting with our next meeting. We have a fifteen minute comment period at the beginning or the end of the meeting?
Let's do it, let's do it at the beginning or following public hearings. Would we have to get, to do that, do we just agree upon that or does it have to go through the village?
It's totally.
Totally with this, okay.
It's just received.
Okay.
So it would be either before the meeting, but not prior to any public hearing?
Well, not before the meeting, but.
Well, before the meeting, so.
It's part, after the meeting is open, it could be the first item on the agenda or immediately followed.
Correct.
Anyway, to your own.
Limited to fifteen minutes, three minutes per person, limited to issues directly involving the village.
Do you want to have a protocol on the agendas as you, the first few times you do this, like literally, this is how we wanted to?
Public comment.
I would write public, well, let's finish this first.
That's the motion.
That's the motion. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I think that what we'll probably do is what the town planning board does, which it says public comment and then in parentheses. it says public comment, and then in parentheses it says, in their case it says fifteen minutes, and I think what we'll also do is just put in three minutes per person.
Did they ask people to sign up as a commis?
Not for that.
No, it's just whoever's the first one to the microphone, that thing?
Yes, and the, I've been going to more town planning board meetings recently, and most of the time nobody says anything.
Yeah, I would imagine that's true.
But this is the village. That's what we've got.
We will be getting a podium for the end, that will be mine.
Okay. Okay, thank you, so let's move on. So with regards to, just to close out that item, let's, if possible, depending on what our agenda looks like at our next meeting, maybe we'll have a more substantive discussion about sort of planning board procedures and interfacing with the planner and the building department. If we have a very busy agenda, we can put that off. So we have minutes now for both meetings in July and two meetings in August. I don't actually have these in front of me.
I don't either, I forgot to bring them.
So...
I know that there was one that I could not...
I'm okay, I was not...
I know there was one that I am not okay on, because...
The most recent meeting shouldn't very much be reviewed, there were some...
Well, we can't approve the August eighteenth anyway, we don't have a quorum for that, because I wasn't here, I was just with these two guys. And the special planning board meeting...
I don't think we can approve any of them.
Because, because, right, so we can't approve that one.
Right, so we still have to wait for John to give that...
The Jewish one we can't, because August is huge.
Joint planning board meeting, we can't approve it because John wasn't here, and it's only two of us, you choose yourself, so let's move on to item number eight.
Agreed.
We'll just keep carrying on.
And this bombastic review here.
And I'll try to make sure the secretary sends almost like a package of minutes around for your...
Yes. Okay, so we have Jewish holidays in September that interfere with our regularly scheduled meeting on September the fifteenth. So we have a proposal to move our second September meeting either to the twenty-first or the twenty-eighth, both are Mondays.
We checked the schedule, we did our best to offer you two dates that the village hall was available, that's not...
Okay, so Tuesday, other Tuesday meetings are not?
The Tuesday meeting that you normally meet interferes with the observation of Rosh Hashanah the following week.
And then Yom Kippur.
Yom Kippur, and the week after that, the affordable housing and EPC had already private, previously motioned to have their meetings.
And that's, and I guess that presumes, Rosh Hashanah ends at sunset, right, so we start right on the cusp of it.
Yeah, no, it wouldn't work.
In general, we, in general, the practice of the village, which has been discussed before, is that we don't, we don't play the technicality on people who are celebrating the New Year with their family, don't want to, that's not, that's not fair technicality to them, so we just don't adhere to it.
Yeah, so that's fine. So we have two Monday options, the twenty-first and the twenty-eighth. I checked with our attorney, he's available on both. I checked with John Litten, he is also available on both. I have a preference for the twenty-first, because I might have a conflict with the twenty-eighth.
Okay, good, so do I. I have a preference on the twenty-first, I definitely have a conflict on the twenty-first.
Okay, and how about you, Liz?
Let's do the twenty-first?
All right, so we will meet on our next meeting, on the September twenty-first.
You actually have to have a motion for that?
Uh, sure, go ahead.
I move that we change the next planning board meeting to September twenty-first, which is a Monday, to avoid conflict with religious holidays.
Okay?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Do we have to advertise on that, Katie?
Yes, I'll actually be notifying the newspaper, Facebook, and the website that we've changed next.
Okay. Dave, you want to discuss item nine, the B3 NBR zoning district, and what's in front of us?
Last month, this group was provided the tech, at its last meeting last month, this group was provided the proposed text and schedules for the NBR district along with the proposed zoning district footprint, and the group, the group that was here made its recommendation and a report was provided to the village board. I think that there was interest in trying to replicate a footprint within the proposed NBR zone that had been previously considered, however, it appears that there was a error or oversight and no zoning map was submitted to New York State Department of State with the zoning changing. So the village board, after a very brief discussion last week, asked if the planning board would reconsider that footprint, whether there could be support for a zoning footprint that did in fact mimic the proposal, and I can look at the date by Planner Lavala, that essentially covered the NBR district, which would be the existing B3 plus three parcels down between Mulberry and Broadhead, as well as fifteen parcels straddling from Bosse's across Old New Paltz, Old Kingston Road, and Route thirty-two north over towards Sunset Ridge, fifteen parcels. So in a sense, village board is asking if you'll reconsider and...
Okay. So you all had some conversations about this August eighteenth, I understand.
Yeah, and my, my question, I guess, maybe Mr. Rocco, you could clarify why they want to include those pieces?
There was an original proposal of those pieces being included, and map is then left out of consideration. I believe that the law that was passed, having left the map out of consideration, did not include those parcels. And it's a belief, although I personally can't confirm it, that there are developers who are interested in developing along that, those additional parcels, in the, in line with the B3 NBR proposal. Dave, do you, is that...
There, I think it's correct to say that there's interest in, by, on the part of a developer or developers in the north part of the proposed footprint.
Comments, you all?
I...
I'm a little surprised the village board sent it back to us, unless you're looking for a recommendation, because they're the ones who will make the decision. The couple of parcels that we're talking about, I, I don't think they changed the char, the char, character of that neighborhood that much.
If you include them.
If you include them.
All, so this includes all of Bosse's, right?
It would include all of the Bosse's, essentially corresponding with the area north of the existing B3 line, also co-terminus with the village boundary.
Yeah, I thought that's what we did recommend, sold the Bosse's property.
Yeah, we did recommend everything except...
It was not stuff on thirty-two that we did.
Except the pieces of parcels.
Right.
Because there's parcels that, there's a chunk, a small chunk that's in the village, but the majority of the parcel is in the town.
Town, right.
And there's those, all those that are just pieces of the, of a parcel are the ones that I had suggested, don't mess with.
Okay, so...
Because what's the sense of rezoning a sliver of a parcel? I...
Right, if the town zone doesn't.
Unless the town was looking to bring good zoning in line with ours, right.
Then we don't know that.
We don't know that.
Right, and we're not aware of that.
What I think I have indicated to you is that there may be a request for annexation in that area, that may also be part of proposals, is a request for annexation in that area.
And the same thing applies to the piece that's just a little north of Old Kingston, of Huguenot Street, rather, it looks like. There's a sliver of village land right here.
Yeah.
North of Huguenot?
Yeah.
But generally, if you're to think of how zoning boundaries are defined, I think it would essentially be right of way. It's not property at the, the boundary line essentially is Huguenot Street, there is not developable land within the village beyond Huguenot Street.
No, there isn't, okay.
And that other piece on thirty-two, for the most part, is Bosse's parking lot on the front.
Yeah. So, without knowing exactly what you guys talked about at the last meeting, I didn't have a chance to catch up. I'm, I'm in favor of adding the three parcels that are the southern end and the western side of thirty-two, I guess there's general agreement about that?
Yes.
Between Mulberry and Broadhead.
Yeah, these paths right here.
Which used to be B3 and then that changed, okay.
And now we've got to put it back in.
And Bosse's, I mean, I could go either way on that, but if, certainly the property owners may have something to say about it, but that might provide opportunities for the state, I guess, whoever owns Bosse's. But I agree with Liz, I'm uncomfortable recommending slivers of land that are parts of parcels that are also in the town. If there's an annexation request in the future, then I would say that annexation should include a consideration of rezoning, but I'd rather do it all at once, rather than put those in. One sec.
No, I was just joining.
No, I know you were joining, but I want to, now that you're done?
Oh.
Any thoughts about what, how you'd like these?
Those slivers are just completely unbuildable in terms of the current zoning as independent parcels.
Okay.
So the effect of changing the zoning on them...
You think there's no...
I don't see where it's going to change anything in the world to change the zoning on them, because given their current zoning or given the NBR zoning, they're slivers of property. But if they get a...
But that's not true, because right now, they're zoned in such a way they're consistent, but the town's not, so you couldn't build all of those lots. They're residential, they're not B3.
Yeah, but look at the size of the plot, the blocks.
Yeah, but I mean, you could put individual lots in them.
I doubt it.
You doubt it? Okay. All right, so your argument is, you know, it could be...
I don't think change, I mean, the one that's direct, directly on the south of, what's the one that goes the road up to...
Sunset Ridge.
Sunset Ridge. That's a tiny, tiny piece, there. And the water and sewer lines aren't down there yet, now maybe someday they will be.
Right.
But certainly the way it exists now, you couldn't build a thing on that property.
Okay.
The other one is part of another parcel that if you took it away from that parcel, I would think that parcel would have a problem in terms of being able to stand alone without it. It's part of a residential house there.
Right.
I would appreciate it conveying the meaning of what you're doing, to have included in your motion that you're limiting your recommendations to buildable lots. I'm going to talk about slivers or pieces, or that you're limiting your recommendation to buildable lots, let everybody else deal with it, let the future deal with it, slivers or, because we don't know if there is going to be an annexation, if you build it to the annex town property or town land, we don't know any of that.
Or exactly, that's...
So I would leave out of concern in your recommendation, because the village board's going to have to struggle with this.
Okay.
Buildable lots.
All right, fair enough. So, so you're, so my sense is that you don't have an objection to using the entire proposed footprint or boundaries as their...
Yeah, I mean, I like zoning when it's, you know, doesn't have these little stray pieces to it.
Right.
So that's why those little stray slivers bother me a bit.
Okay.
Yes, right.
I'd rather they were, you know...
I mean, this isn't a nice rectangle anyway.
No, but...
No, but that, because...
It's the biggest blob we could attach those slivers to.
And I think the biggest problem is that the ones that have the slivers, it's because the slivers in the village and the rest of the lawn is in the town.
Right.
But you guys seem to be arguing for different points. You're saying therefore we should include them, rather than leave them out, bring them into this new zone, and your argument is you should leave them out.
Right.
Do I, do I have that right?
Yes, you got that right.
Okay. And...
So it says to me, why don't we wait till John gets better?
Because we're not gonna...
Well, because I think we're...
The dilemma is that we're supposed to then give a recommendation, give a recommendations. When do you all meet next? Well, you meet tomorrow.
Of course, and we meet every week, for the next three weeks, there's something or other, so.
Okay.
Then, I think there's a village board meeting tomorrow, so...
But I don't think this would be on the agenda.
Okay.
So, I don't think we're...
I presume that I could report out and then make a...
Well, I think what you can report is that we don't have consensus.
Well, Michael, where do you stand on it? Maybe we do have consensus.
Well, I agree with Liz, I would, as I said before...
Then we have consensus, I'll go along with it.
Are you serious?
Sure, you know...
Okay.
You know, I can go, I can live with that.
Okay, well then the recommendation is to have the footprint as it is drawn here with the exception of, and I'm not going to do this justice, he'll have to redraw this in a day, of excluding those parcels...
The east side of thirty-two.
East of thirty-two that are around Sunset Ridge, to the north and south of Sunset Ridge, that are property that, whose individual lots include property both in the village and in the town. Other than that, everything else is as is drawn.
That includes in, north of the parking area on, so between thirty-two and...
Old Kingston Road.
Old Kingston Road, the parcels above the...
Those which have been included, those are included, not as...
Included, that include.
And they were included, yes, the first time around.
Okay, so the only thing that we're cutting out here are the, so, okay, so the motion, I'll make this one, is to recommend to the village board that they...
Oh, no.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I was...
Hey.
It's okay. Recommendation is, the motion is to recommend to the village board that the boundaries of the NBR district be as drawn and described on this map that was provided us by Dave Gilmore, based on the map from Kirkabala, with the exception of, that is excluding the parcels that are to the, on the northern end of the zone, east of thirty-two, that border Sunset Ridge.
Sunset Ridge.
And are parcels that include land both in the village and in the town. Is that clear enough?
Yes.
And do we want to say that you supersede your prior report two weeks ago with this recommendation tonight?
Yeah, because two weeks ago, we were, we were cutting it off at, it did not include those, because they were residential. So we're now saying, yeah, take those and dump it into there. Originally, it was there.
Okay, I see. That's fine with me, I mean, this is short, but wasn't at that, so I can't speak to it, but the reason we're doing this is because the village board sent this back to us, so, but sure. Okay, so that's the motion?
Take it.
Any comments?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Might I make a point of clarification?
Sure.
Regarding the village board meeting tomorrow, the meeting is noticed in such a way that it is, that the board will return to executive session, they will exit, and then if they choose, they can partake in any other action of the board. That's how it's noticed, so they can talk about it if they were to...
Well, that's up to them, if, I mean, there are time considerations in terms of sending this to the county, planning board, and in trying to do our best to meet the deadline in the morning, but...
So we're going to have to extend.
Okay. Okay, well, that's up, that, we'll deal with that. But anyway, so that's, we're returning that to you all. Schedule of escrow deposits, this was something that was discussed last month, I think, and we were waiting on information from our engineer to insert into there. He's provided that as a recommendation in several places. Engineer commercial with exterior construction, 2,500. Engineer create two or more lots for, new lots for subdivision, 1,500. Engineer under subdivision creating one new lot, 1,000, and seeker type one actions. Engineer add 750 to the above amounts.
And just to be clear, I, there was a highlighted version where I was seeking to clarify with Mr. Klausert, the presumed cost for commercial with no exterior.
Okay.
Mr. Klausert affirmed that there would be no base engineering cost for commercial with no exterior.
Okay.
So, you should have, the correct version is not the highlighted yellow, but with nothing under that, just attorney.
Okay. So...
And then, do you want to, one question is, in that second to last paragraph, is do you want planning board chair to be the person to...
Right, thank you. So, it says, if any initial deposit is depleted to less than 50% of the original amount, the applicant shall replenish the escrow account to the original amount if the consultant and planning board chair deem it necessary. In such event, professional review may be suspended until the escrow account is replenished. I had asked previously that the planning board have the opportunity to make that decision rather than just the chair. Is that up to you all at the time when I said it?
Well, Michael, part of your idea, you know, sharing more responsibilities with the chair, this could be taken on by one of us.
Sure.
Of which, I've got enough experience with escrow deposits.
Yeah, I mean, the reason that I, and that's great, that's fine, the reason that I was suggesting it not be limited to an individual was that there was at least one situation several years ago where it seemed that there was a substantial amount of conflict between the applicant and the chair as to the escrow account. And without pointing any fingers or anything...
No, that's only what it seemed like, that wasn't true.
Okay.
I sat in the board that time also, and that was what it seemed like, but not true.
Okay.
We had a chairman who at that time, that's the way he played.
Okay. So...
Now, the only question I have on these fees is that, when do we set the escrow? Because when was the last time we actually used Dave Klausert's expertise on an application? It's pretty rare.
The two examples for, maybe three examples are, you had a two-lot subdivision, Jewett, you didn't use them. You had a lot line adjustment, you didn't use them.
No.
We've had fairly small cases.
We had Elting Avenue.
Non-residential site plans for Goodwill Church or for 71 Main, and those are internal essentially, not too much or no external work. So, but you're likely to have non-residential site plans that involve external work.
Yeah, but I'm saying, when will we set the escrow?
Well, we need to set it at the beginning before...
So, we take a look and we say, well, we're probably going to use Dave, therefore the escrow will be.
So, if it, this is your, this is your policy that you're setting, so that the planner knows to say, okay, this is your escrow and I cash it before the meeting, so that it pays for your attorney and/or engineer to review.
It has to be...
And if it's a complicated case, I or others will say, it's a complicated case, let's go check with the planning board. We've got a base recommendation, but let's get the base amount and then go talk to the planner.
So, the short answer is, we have to establish an escrow before it comes to us for determination and completeness, otherwise, at least our attorney can't even review it.
Right, right.
So, we're basically allowing, by agreeing to this schedule, what we're doing is we're saying, these are the fees that the planner and the building department can use basis for minimum. So, makes sense?
Yes.
Okay. So, to go back to your comment, Rich, then, in the second to last paragraph, we can change it to, say, if the consultants...
And the planning board.
And planning board chair or...
Or do you just designate?
Or his or her designee.
So, it's, it's not, you didn't want to just go back to a whole board, but you were looking for some of that...
Well, no, I'm listening to what you're saying, and I'm suggesting that as a modification.
Could you repeat that, please?
So, we'll say, if any initial deposit is depleted to less than half, the applicant shall replenish the escrow account to the original amount if the consultant and planning board chair or his or her designee deem it necessary. So, just that addition. I'm fine with the numbers, so I make the motion that we approve the schedule of escrow deposits.
You've actually got a resolution from...
Oh, we do, you're right.
So, you're, you've got your resolution from your attorney, here you go.
Okay. So, we have a resolution for, motion to approve the resolution for adopting the escrow schedule. We're going to skip the whereas's, which is we refer to section 1266B that authorized the planning board to set escrow accounts and so forth. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved that, one, the annexed schedule of escrow deposits is hereby adopted, and, two, the annexed schedule shall be kept on file in the building department and in the offices of the village clerk and secretary of the planning board, and, three, if the prescribed escrow deposit is deemed inadequate by the consulting professional for a particular application, the building inspector or secretary shall consult with the chair of the planning board, or his or her designee, I'm adding that, to determine the appropriate escrow deposit, and, four, such escrow deposits shall be collected at the time the application is filed, and no application shall be deemed administratively complete until such escrow deposit has been received.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On your favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. So, with that modification, thank you. Dave, can we postpone item number 11 until our next meeting, reviewing modifications to the 21223? Is that okay?
Of course.
Okay, appreciate it.
I mean, you certainly have great interest in making sure that the protocol is understood for submission standards for residential versus non-residential site.
Don't want to delay...
You've got a proposal before you, and I'm sure we'll keep moving with that.
I don't want to delay, but I want to make sure that we do it, but I'd rather give it, try to get to it a little earlier, when everybody's attention is, at least mine, is a little more focused, and also that John is here. Okay, last item. You want to take that?
So, I, you weren't at the last meeting, but I submitted to the planning board a self-assessment workshop for flood resiliency. I informed, and I subsequently gave that to you. We've got upcoming community meetings on, we've got a community meeting.
Okay.
And so, I'm making sure that the reporter here is about our community meeting on Thursday, September 17th, and that will be at 7 o'clock in this room. And US EPA is providing technical assistance on flood resiliency to the village in New Pauls.
Okay.
And, for example, I've encouraged them to talk about stormwater management and green infrastructure, and how we build hazard resilient land uses, like how we promote resiliency in non-residential building. But the community meeting will be on Thursday night, the 17th, here at 7 o'clock, and then the next day, there's a workshop where we both take up topics that were presented at the community, the open community workshop meeting on the prior evening, the next day, there will be a smaller workshop, such as involving land use board. So, it would be, I don't know if you folks can attend, but the workshop...
What are the hours?
And that, so that's going to be basically, I'm assuming it's going to be about 9 to 4.
Okay.
And we'll do that at Bowse's.
Is registration required?
None. I'm trying to get numbers and involve multi-stakeholders, and the way that I structured it is so that I recommend, I made a presentation for the village board and recommended that you can get your land use training contact hours that you need to have each year with that.
Okay, so that'll cover the whole there.
And essentially, I think it will be a mini-planning session on flood resiliency and hazard planning of the flood nature.
Okay.
And the byproduct will be like a five to 10-page report from USPA, and they've got a national consultant, Tetra Tech. So, if you folks can come, I'm letting you know that it's a session, no fee, designed for you, and we're trying, and we'll work out at lunch. It's got to be at Bowse's from 9:4.
New Paltz Bowse's.
Yes, here, on that Friday.
Well, thank you.
Didn't you give us a handout on that tonight?
I, you have the self-assessment from the, it was reprinted in your package, so you've got the self-assessment, feel free to look at that. And of course, I'll send RSVP and Ramoni to apply. The town's been invited to, other stakeholders within the community, and the consultants come on Thursday, the 17th. We'll actually travel around the community, showing them some of our, for example, flood zone, and I think they'll actually talk at vote of reach.
Okay, great. One more item, I just want to tell the public that due to the untimely death of Maurice Whitman, we do have a vacancy on this planning board, and we would encourage interested members of the village to apply. If you know somebody on the planning board, you're welcome to contact any one of those people and let them know that you're interested, or anybody on the village board, and I'd like to collect some names, pass them along.
There was an advertisement this weekend, the paper, also looking for volunteers with contract information.
Thanks.
And then, there was one other item that I, I think you wanted to introduce email into the record for...
Thank you for reminding me, yes. I just wanted to, as a, as a point, I know we had a conversation, by email, the planning board was discussing an item that was brought to us having to do with 71 Main Street, the demolition of the Yanni's building, and it was a, 71 or 51?
51.
Sorry, 51, thank you. 51 Main Street. And I just wanted to, and I'll send this along to you, Katie, since it was a conversation among planning board members, it was not controversial, I don't think, but I would just like to provide that email as part of the public record, so I will send you all of that. We were basically just asked by the building inspector via Dave to determine whether or not we understood that the demolition, which they were being asked for to get a permit, was something that we had generally approved as part of the site plan. Everybody seemed to agree that you couldn't build a new building without tearing down the old building, so...
And you will be issued very shortly, Village of New Paltz email addresses, that will be your first initial, your last name, at villageofnewpaltz.org. We're hoping before the, before the middle of September, that will be completed, and that will be for all boards, committees, and commissions.
Excellent. Yeah, no, that's great. I really appreciate that. All right, final business, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? Any objections? Good, thank you all very much.
Aye!
Aye.
You sign.
You need a board?